Good evening, everyone. If you'd please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today is Monday, August 2, 2021. The time being 7:00 p.m. The meeting of the Revert City Council is called to order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary non-recurve that is available on the table in the back of the room. Before we do roll call, I would like to add one item to the agenda after Sarah. We will hear from Mark Klosterkamp, our Street Commissioner, on a stormwater issue. With that, Amy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Jamie Hayne.
Here.
Kevin Sweetwood.
Here.
Darrell Pulling.
Here.
Vianna McKenzie.
Here.
Rick Adam Smaller.
Any motion to change the agenda?
Would you like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Okay. Second by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, thank you. I have approval of the minutes. We did not have a meeting in July, so we will do June 7, 2021. You all should have received a copy of those. Any edits, additions, edits or corrections. Motion's been made by Vianna.
Second.
Second by Darrell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
I abstain.
Jamie abstains. Okay. Old business. We have 2021-11 is an ordinance to pay former police chief Brendan Bridges out for his sick time. Any questions on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We also have ordinance 2021-13, which is an additional appropriation for $10,000 to pay the balance of the fire department's radio purchase from last year.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Darrell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vianna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. First thing under new business, Police Chief Mike McNeely with an announcement about National Night Out. Good evening.
Good evening, Mike. Good evening, Kevin. So, the first thing I want to talk about is National Night Out. It will be tomorrow night at North Park. It's going to be on the south end of the park, so it's going to be along Fourth Street. We are going to be feeding folks that are there, as well as demonstrations of police equipment, police canines. We're going to have some booths set up. The city will have a booth, fire department will have a booth. We'll be registering golf carts, child ID kits, canine t-shirt sales, and have a sign-up for Project Lifesaver, as well as we're going to do a demonstration of that, so they can have an opportunity to see how that works. That's pretty much it for National Night Out again tomorrow night. You guys are invited, as well as the public, to come meet our police officers. Everybody is going to be there. We thought there was going to be a few that weren't going to make it, but every officer will be there, as well as several firemen and EMS, and maybe even helicopter. Second thing I want to talk about tonight would be the UTVs. We received an email from DNR on our UTV registration, and the process that we're doing with that, we've temporarily put a pause on that, waiting to hear back from their chief counsel before we pick that back up. So, as soon as I get more information on that, I would forward that to you. The last thing I want to talk to you about is this Saturday, on 8:00 a.m., we will be doing a physical agility test for a hiring pool for a potential new police officer if one of our 20-year members decides to leave, or one of our younger members decides to leave. So, this is, we don't currently have an opening, but this will just be a list for us to go down through if that happens. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we have, I guess this will be the first formal introduction to the council because of our meeting this last month, New Clerk Treasure Amy Morris with ordinance 2021-14.
Yeah, this is for additional appropriations for animal control. I believe it was discussed at the June meeting.
Sure. So, if we recall, this was part of that discussion about paying the 2020 bill with 2021 money, and then going back and refunding 2021's account with 2021 money that should be paid by the end of the year.
So, this is not, this is to cover a gap between this year's budget and last year's budget, or what?
We, oh, you, yeah. So, the animal control invoice for 2020 came in June of 2021, and we didn't encumber the funds from 2020 because we didn't know the invoice wasn't coming, right? And so, there was a discussion about paying the money due to the county for 2020 with the already appropriated funds of 2021, but that would not leave enough appropriated funds to pay the 2021 invoice in December.
Right. Okay.
So, we were like a year behind, but we didn't spend the money in 2020.
So, I got you.
But it wasn't covered. So, we kind of needed to backfill that account. And the amount is for $85,218, which Amy's office has investigated with the county with what is left, and with what this amount is, should be close to what we need to cover the 2021 invoice. Make a motion to approve. Motion's been made by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second by Darrell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have Street Commissioner Billman, Commissioner Sarah Heiner, ordinance 2021-12.
Good evening. You should have received ordinance 2021-12, which is amending ordinance 2012 S-16, sections 93.11 to 93.18. As I was making a change in this ordinance, 9316, letter C, I noticed that all the other part of this ordinance, since we have any trash tokers a few years ago, were not updated, so those updates were made by Street Commissioner Mark Klosterkamp. So, it's just removing those sections in ordinance.
It was mostly just language cleanup, right?
Yes.
And the part we were focused on was?
Yeah, the part I was focused on was the brush, like tree landscaping service, and the removal of that. So, we changed the wording. That was in 9316, letter C, to where the tree or landscaping service contractor hired the service removes topstruck trees, and the contractor or the owner will be held responsible for the removal. And then that led to the other changes with trash tokers. We just updated that and have a review tomorrow for that.
Any other questions for Sarah? This was something that we stumbled upon due to a complaint.
What were the changes for the trash tokers?
Okay. So, in 9311, add collection for residents only. The part that was added on there at the end, where it says shall be provided for commercial establishments or non-residential property, that was added. Holiday collection, that was. Shall, the trash shall not be, garbage and trash shall not be provided by the city on holidays, recognized by the city. The city holiday trash schedule will be available prior to the beginning of the calendar year and won't reflect any collection changes, whereas before, in the old ordinance, it was specific on the actual holidays, which, instead of being specific by date and holiday, it just goes by the trash schedule. And the 9314, letter B, this is updating all, because in the old ordinance, it says not more than 32 gallons, and now we have the 95-gallon tokers, and the content shall not exceed 60 pounds a weight, whereas before, it was applied back in the, in all the trash that placed in the tokers would be in trash bags, just cleaning that up basically on the tokers instead of using their personal trash cans.
There was a comment, I think, on the 9311, and what I'm wondering is, are there currently places that might fall under that, that we're picking up now, that we won't be picking up after we make this change? And have we notified them to give them time to change?
Don't believe there's any. Uh.
I thought there was a comment about a church or two, maybe, or maybe I missed.
Well, we didn't address that. That decided by the previous administration that we picked up churches, several churches, and we still continue to do that. We didn't really address them, as the nothing profit in there. So, at this time, we are planning on continuing to pick those up.
Okay. I'm just saying, if we're going to change it, we need to probably give them some notice and then give them an opportunity to figure. I didn't want to just all of a sudden just stop picking it up.
And I will follow your direction. In other words, the thing is, it's kind of complex, because some we do, some we don't. If she thinks we need to be consistent and not pick any of them up, I'd give them like 60 days' notice that it's going to be suspended, and then we can do it.
I think we could, like, we can have a different conversation, find out how big a problem it is, before we find a solution for a problem, for a problem that doesn't exist right now.
You have.
No, no, I, I just, I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to create another problem on the other side, right? That's what I was getting at, so.
All right.
Okay. And then continuing into that same section, 9314, under C, basically talks about if residents need to find a second toter to meet their needs, that they would seek that through the degrees for utility office, and that they would incur an additional monthly trash collection fee, and that the toter must remain at the residence unless the patient meets a utility office. And then 9318, that all newspapers, magazines, and cardboard must be placed within the toter for collection, whereas before, it was stating that all newspapers, magazines, cardboard must be securely bundled and contained to prevent the spread of litter on the streets. So, just kind of cleaned it up a little bit. And if we have an opportunity.
Any other questions for Sarah or comments?
So, when you say utility office, that's the water office, the water utility office. Is that the same for the recycling?
No, recycling would go through solid waste.
Just a quick question off of what you're talking about there. Is there an ordinance, or to whom do I address this issue to? If there is a bush or a tree on a corner that's, causes a blind spot for traffic, where do we go to with that?
We have an ordinance currently that says if it's within a triangle, that you extend the two curb lines where they intersect, and you measure about 25 feet curving. So, in other words, you'll see some that are actually in the way, but they're not violating the ordinance.
So, to whom do I address this with?
I guess the city council would like to change the ordinance, will change ordinance.
No, I just have a single issue.
Mark.
Mark Kowan, page.
I want to talk to you after this meeting.
Get your measuring tape ready.
The problem we run into, Darrell, there's a lot of them, but they don't fit in that 25-foot triangle, because you put that radius of what our ordinance says, you have to extend that out into the intersection, and then measure back 25 feet. The triangle is tiny.
Let me just throw this out to you. Ninth Street and Carver, you've got the bypass traffic coming in quickly, and there's a lot of near misses there. Maybe you could drive by there and take a look at it.
Ninth Street, the first one that comes through.
Yes.
So, you go down a pretty steep grid, and you turn off Carver.
Correct.
I think that that one does, it falls outside the 25-foot triangle.
Okay.
And if you want, I'll meet you up there sometime, and I'll lay out the triangle, so you can just see how little of area it impacts. So, that's got a big radius, it's on where they make the big wide radius. So, when you extend those two curb lines out, it's very easy to find the curve. But we'll be happy to go out and look at it.
Okay. I'll talk to you. Thank you.
What about the tree Kentucky Fried Chicken?
The what?
The tree Kentucky, I had, somebody asked me about this this week.
I have no control over private driveway.
The tree, the tree, it's landscaping, it's within the ordinance, isn't it? They're landscaping.
Not on a private driveway, it is on a public street.
Okay, so, there's a tree, I guess, we pull it out of Arby's, there's a tree over in Kentucky Fried Chicken's lot, that's, the state is KFC.
We have no control over, if it's on private driveway.
What about, okay. What about trash? We can get back to that.
Does he have any other questions?
Yeah, anything else on trash? 21-12.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Would it spend the rest of that?
Are there any fines?
Um, you know, I should have looked back and forth, but I don't think so.
I should have, I should have said to everyone, Chris had a health emergency, so he couldn't join us. He was here for the board.
If there's no need to rush us, we're waiting.
I don't see where there's any fees or anything in here.
What's the minimum charge of $2.50? Where is it?
Togger.
93.2.
The minimum charge would be set at $2.50.
We can just, yeah, we can just say that wasn't changed, but. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, Mark, your conversation discussion about our stormwater issue, which while you're making your way up here, ties into, this was not intentional, ties into the next topic we're going to cover with Sheila McKinnney from Christopher B. Burke Engineering about stormwater issues, but this is unrelated to that, just timing.
Oh, timing horrible. When we started having the head of rain, it was about three weeks ago, up at the mid-block alley between North and Washington Street on Stewart. We actually have old laden-up rock culverts under the streets. At some time, they connected them with vitrified clay pipe. One of those has gone completely failed, and it's literally just blowing up in people's backyards, or flooding homes. We have looked at it, we've investigated, we've had cameras in it, we had a crew out all day today. To give you an idea, thankfully, Chief Durham brought out fire trucks. We dumped 6,000-gallon water into the, we've got a 15-inch pipe. Rough calculations, four minutes, about 6,000-gallon water should have drained through the pipe. It took about four hours. That's how bad of a failure we got. And it pretty much unlocks probably 12 blocks on the east side of the bridge. Catches all the water off of Washington Street, catches the side streets, it runs through the alleys, and we're going to have to replace it. A minimum of 500 feet. We have a budget right now, currently about $20,000 a year for storm, for mid-year. We spent part of it. This is probably, I talked to a couple contractors this afternoon, we're talking $45,000 to $55,000 project. We're going to have to have some unappropriates to take care of.
So, when are we looking to do it, or if I have it?
Pardon?
When are we looking to have it done?
As quickly as possible. In other words, if we've been lucky, it hasn't rained for two weeks. I'd be happy to meet with any of you out there. The mayor's been there several times, Ron's been there, we've had, like I said, I hired Mason Underground Locating, they were at the camera today, we tried, we looked at the ground penetrating radar, we chose not to do that, but we've investigated. We're getting about 30 feet, we just run in blocks of failed pipe. We would like to do the whole thing, all the way back down North Street to the bridge at the armory, which almost doubles the length, therefore doubles the cost.
I just wondered, I mean, because if we do an ordinance to put money there, you're talking, we better have two readings on it, and I don't want to delay it that long, but at the same time, let's figure out where to get the money from. How do we get the project started if we're talking?
I'd like to, I'd like to at least tell you, we're going to have to do it, we're going to find an additional appropriation and get it started, but I could at least get a plan, sometimes it's best to put together, get it out and blow, and get it started.
I would get this back up, that's what I'm saying, I guess, I'm just wanting to take a look at the budget and figure out where we're getting money from.
There's, I mean, with additional, there's not something that's scalable already appropriated. We do have cash reserves that, and we're going to talk about that in a couple weeks too, it's not the inability to afford it, it's just not already a budget.
Would the stimulus money that we receive, would that qualify?
It could. There is water, wastewater, Sheila McKinnney, you, like, there's stormwater components to that. We have to confirm that this type of project, I can't commit to it today.
Right. Just an idea.
I think that's a good idea.
And it would be one of those avenues we would pursue. We would just, I guess, more of the request tonight is, one, make you aware of it, two, if you'd like to go look at it, I'll admit, it's a hole in the ground, but.
Matter of fact, it's now probably about a dozen holes in the ground, because we've just been punching holes all the way up and down through this pipe, and every place we go, we just run into, you know, 12 inches of silt, tree roots, it's completely decomposed apart, where every tree is growing into it, and you can't get the cameras through it, so we.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think what we're saying is, go out and get it, and figure out what it's going to cost to get it to there.
And we're going to look at doing the half, try to give back some kind of standard worth of support. I mean, the lower, I can't explain to you why, but the upper end of the project is 15-inch pipe. They brought us three blocks, and then reduced it to 12 inch pipe, they completely backed. The lower half needs to be rectified somewhat more than that. Depending on how we go with the next topic, possibly we can put that off until sometime next year, where we can actually have revenue to be able to figure it out. And not, while they start on getting, as quick as possible.
Sure, Jamie.
I agree.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about any trash, or we can do that?
Oh, I'll let you talk, man.
Oh, great. To be, to be determined. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is 2021-15, which Sheila McKinnney, who has been our partner with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the last several months to cover this, and of course, you're firm, and you have been tremendously successful across the Midwest in, Ron said earlier, hydrogeology and stormwater management. So, we're glad that you're here. If you, I know everybody, Jamie, hopefully you had an opportunity to watch everybody else's have the opportunity. Maybe you, if just, if you could very briefly give us a little bit of an updated background, where we are, where we've come from, and where we're going.
Great, thank you. It's been nice to see you all again. Thank you for inviting us this evening. So, the city of Revert, the many communities, has this basic stormwater challenge, right? You have to pay for on-site maintenance. Mark gave a little bit of example of repairs that need to be done. Plus, you have to meet the compliance with groundwater access. Two big things that many communities are basically trying to manage themselves as well. So, Stormwater Utility is a dedicated funding source, and it can be used to pay for stormwater projects and your stormwater program. It provides sustainable revenue, generates revenue, you know how much money you're going to collect each year, so you can really plan in advance for, for projects. It provides permanent visibility through drainage system, water quality and quality of life for your residents. It's very common, a stormwater utility, there's about 1,800 throughout the United States, and there are 95 in Indiana. So, we've been working with the project teams, the staff and the mayor, and they definitely identified a need, a majority of that is capital projects, inlet replacement project, drainage improvement projects. There were 10 that were identified in a 2010 study, and there's still a need for those, and then putting together a stormwater master plan to identify the next round of projects. We came up with, after many iterations and back and forth, we decided to offer a stormwater fee, or propose a stormwater fee that's $7 for a single-family residence, and that is a flat fee, or $3,000 per feet on average. And then non-residential, their payment would be based on their actual impertious. This would allow the city to generate approximately $1.3 million a year, and again, that would pay for those capital projects, some operating expense, only a small amount, and then some administrative, but that's all, that's a very small amount too. Unapproved properties would be paying about $2.33, because they do have runoff, and they do contribute to the public infrastructure. So, in addition to the stormwater utility that's being proposed, there's a credit angle, and that would reduce the fee of non-residential property. So, they could go above and beyond what your stormwater requirements are. They would improve the water quality, they would have less runoff off their site, and less use of the public infrastructure. We also looked at comparison for other communities, and this is very comparable to other communities of similar sizes to these. I'd be happy to answer questions, if you have questions, or have any on hand in discussion.
Questions for Sheila, now that we've had some time to think about it and go through it beforehand as well. I did talk to Chris between the meetings, and he was comfortable with the ordinance as written, should you all be. And then, of course, this is just first reading, it does require two readings, so we could address something else, should you find something he has reviewed it between now and then, per second. The other thing is, before you all decide what to do on first reading, the Board of Works has agreed to extend Sheila and Christopher B. Burke's contract to provide educational and informational sessions for the public and anybody else who may want to have that. So, we would intend to host a couple of those to talk about, you know, the impacts of what we plan to do with the project. A key stone to our discussion was that we didn't want a bunch of administrative costs in this, there aren't any salaries in this, it is truly infrastructure, really. So, those are some of the highlights. Any other? Comments? I think this is something that's been, been worked on for, or been discussed for years. I don't think we've made it this far, but I think this here has shown us the impact of it too. Vianna, Kevin? I would take a motion to pass ordinance 2021-15, the establishment of a stormwater utility on first reading. Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Vianna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all, thank you, Sheila, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
The rest of my items are sort of update items. We have the annual community foundations appointment to their Lilly Board. I served as your appointment last year, be happy to do that again, but if you would like to appoint someone else, that is?
I nominate Josh. Second.
Whoa, that took no time.
Right.
Wow. Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by the entire board. Kevin, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? A little bit of a Ready Grant update, which is the, Brian Robinson's going to talk about that a little bit, it's the regional economic acceleration and development initiative put together by the state. So, good evening, Brian.
Yes, hello. Just to give you a little update, we had a full day of meetings on last Thursday, actually, the community came together, we had some focus groups, but also a larger public meeting on last Thursday, from folks from all different sectors of the community, of the county and the city, coming to help talk about what projects, what programs, what themes they wanted to see happen in our community. HWC led the talks in each instance, and we got a lot of wonderful feedback and input. The next steps, again, for this ready purposes, everybody know what the Ready Grant is? I guess I took that for assumption. The state has set aside $500 million for various reasons to. State has set aside five hundred million dollars for various regions to put together application, you were able to form your own vision, we formed one with Shelbyville and Shelby County, Rushville and Rush County, Grisburg, Gator County, and the city of Bay was kind of concentrating on that, the I seventy-four corridor. So we continued work kind of hand in hand. They also had their respective community meetings, and then coming up on the fourth will be a meeting individually, with some representatives of our community to go and kind of see where all those themes, the projects and programs overlapped, and see where we can kind of put together the story of our region and what we need in our area to move forward. Alex will say that there is a public survey out, it's on the city Greensboro's website, we encourage the entire public to still fill it out and pass it along and share it at will, that's just everybody's open opportunity to take advantage of, or to be part of this process without taking a brush to. It's a great opportunity, it's actually a score of opportunity to have this, access to these funds that you need to match, afford them, so we'll be looking at local governments and also private industries to kind of help us leverage that as a community challenge.
Any questions for Brian or I on that? Brian and I have been our, kind of, well, I guess, meetings, our contact, you've been the U C, he's counsel, we've been the member partners, and he's been the county, so that's our four, kind of, core team. We've been meeting every week on Wednesdays in the afternoons, and it's been taking up a lot of time, but it's generational impactful, so it's been.
And actually, they moved the deadline for the application was in the August, in September, we are still going towards the August date, so we'll have that, uh, depending on your time, if it's in the fall. But yes, it is a lot of work, I suppose, and it's my time, I'll be able to mention it over my desk, since I have social friends.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Kind of a quick little update on City Hall, we are backing up our move date slated for August tenth for quite a while. Nothing dramatic, just timing, and the contractor has pushed back our punch list date to August sixteen. So we will start that, that'll probably take us two weeks, and then it's our intention to move after Labor Day. So our September meeting will still be here, we won't move back over there in time, and then, and it's our intention again, to have a public open house, which I would encourage all of you to attend, not only as citizens, but also as members of the council, to talk with constituents, talk about the project. That's gonna currently be September twenty-fifth, which is a Saturday, from ten AM to one PM. Departments that are in the building will be present, we're gonna have some refreshments, things like that available. It sounds like we're not making progress, we are making a tremendous amount of progress, it just is not quite as far along as it should have been or could have been, and we're just kind of dealing with that. If we recall, that the contractor that was selected had a much shorter timeline than the other contractors, we asked them explicitly about the timeline, and so we're still ahead of most of the contractor finished dates, but we are behind the contractor finished date of the one we chose. So that's sort of where we are at the moment. If any of the council would like to go over and do a walkthrough, I'm happy to arrange that, just want to know what works for you. Questions on that? Our budget workshop, which was supposed to be Wednesday, has been postponed to August sixteen, which is Monday, five-thirty PM, it will be here in this room. You all should have received a calendar update invite from Jennifer at the financial. Everybody pulled out their phones, it doesn't appear so, so let me know of that.
More came out of sleep, I saw an invitation, yes.
Again, nothing dramatic, just a change of date.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty, it'll be here. And of course, that is a public meeting. Heavy trash will be August sixteenth through the twentieth, again, will be something that the street department does, although we still have some summer assistance in that realm. And then the final kind of public announcement is, at the September meeting, we will have a public hearing, per notice, for the beverage house in four-twenty-one Liquors, that was a tax abatement that was revoked, and the owner has asked for that public hearing to take place at the September meeting, so this is notice of that. And Jeff, do you have a quick announcement?
I am notified, I have not been able to.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Twenty-three years of service in the city, so we thank you for that. Of course, we have a few meetings to go yet, but we will start that process with Jeff's input and hope to find the next best person to help us fill that hole. Thank you, Jeff.
Very pleased.
Thank you, Jeff.
And then, obviously, Rick is unavailable to join us this evening, I would ask that everyone continue to keep him and his family in warm prayers as he covers. Jamie, you got an update from the board of works?
Chief McGeeley came out, basically talked to us about the same things he did tonight. Jeff came, and we approved payout application number four, and we also approved pre-treatment discharge permits before renewals, and then he gave us sad, sad news that he just gave over to us a minute ago. Congratulations.
Superstitions.
Ron May came, and we approved basically the agreement that Josh had mentioned, kind of, with the stormwater assistance back, and then Josh gave an update on many of the same things he just gave.
Anything else?
Counsel?
Anybody?
Question to the chair?
Motion's been made to adjourn by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll see everybody on the sixteen, five-thirty.